Was that where they, it wasn't there?
Yeah, there was. Sometimes they want to kind of climb for you.
Okay, I'm ready. Can you please come up here?
Ladies Club.
Oh, that's right. Amir has watched us. Missing that.
Oh, here he comes.
But yes, it's not.
I thought about that the other day.
What happened to him?
No.
I have just seen or heard. It ended its best.
Yeah. You're associated VIPs.
Oh, thank you.
You're VIPs. Tonight, Ron is a VIP. He can sit up front.
Thank you.
That's good. Are you in trouble?
Time to stay out.
Make sure it's at money whatever you say.
Ronnie, if we could have you sit down, my friend. We're going to get started here. Thank you. I'd like to call to order our regular city commission meeting for April 19th, 2017. As a reminder, if I could ask everyone to please turn off your cell phones. We always seem to be serenaded about halfway through the meeting, so if we could get into habit of that, that would be wonderful. At this moment, I'd like everyone to stand for a moment of silence, please, and then the pledge of allegiance. Oh, excuse me. My apologies. New guy on the block here still. I'd like to call to order and do a roll call, if we could, please. That's your exercise for this evening.
Commissioner Battle.
Here.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mayor Gantz.
Here. Thank you. Now, if you all would please raise, rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask for the approval of the city commission minutes, the regular city commission meeting minutes for April 4th, 2017.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
We're going to do a name, a voice call on that. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not seeing any nays, that's 5-0, past majority. I'd like to acknowledge the city board minutes for planning and zoning board meetings for March 2nd, 2017.
I make a motion to acknowledge the board meeting minutes that you just mentioned.
Second.
Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, say nay. Not seeing any, past 5-0. I'd like to do approval of the city commission agenda for April 19th, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, say nay. Seeing any nays, it's past 5-0 to approve the approval of the city commission agenda. Tonight, we have several awards and recognitions, and as we've said at the last meeting, and I appreciate the commission in agreeing with this, when we honor people, we think we should really take the time and not rush through it. There's a reason that you're here, and the reason that you're being honored, and it should be made special. So what we were going to do is as we read through each one of the proclamations and hand them out, we're going to have the commission come off the dais, come down for photos, and give you the opportunity to enjoy the moment, because we are honoring you, and we are greatly appreciative, and the commission agrees that we should show that and show that respect. So first off, what we would like to do, our first resolution is a resolution from the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, naming the newly acquired memorial park as the Brandhilde Richardson Knolls Park, and this was the sponsors, Commissioner Battle. So Commissioner Battle, if you'd like to comment on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought that it would, would be a very great honor for us to name this park in honor of Mrs. Brandhilde Richardson Knolls. Most of you all might not know, but some of the first settlers in this area were Bahamians, and Mrs. Knolls was from the Bahamas, but more than that, she was the midwife, and just about everybody who was there or who is in my age bracket, 55 or above, were attended to, or their birth was attended to by Mrs. Brandhilde Richardson Knolls. And so since a lot, well, like you know, those people out there have gone on to the great beyond, and I thought it was fitting that we named this park in her honor, because she brought us in, and some of the ones that are no longer here, they're gone out now, but she was the one that brought them in also. So I would appreciate it if my colleagues would join me in making this name, well, naming this park, the Brandhilde Richardson Knolls Park.
Is that, yeah, I make a, make a motion. I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding this? If we do a roll call on this, please? I'm sorry? The public to be heard at this time? I'd like to open up the public hearing.
And Mr. Mayor, we do have some of her relatives that are here tonight, if they want to say something.
Yes, good evening. Richard Residence-like, foreign and media from Deerfield Beach. While this is a commendable recommendation, I think that this is the memorial park that we got from the state funding and so forth, and I think that while this is commendable, I think it needs a little bit more addition to this, because this is more than that. This is sacred ground. There were people here, pioneers, before Deerfield was Deerfield, were buried in that ground, and we're also going to have people from the military who have been honored that could be in that area memorialized as well. And so I'd like some recognition for those pioneers, because eventually we're going to have a monument there with their names on it in that area as well. So it should be a pioneer memorial park, as well as named for Richardson as well. So I'd appreciate if you could make an amendment to that, to have that added to that. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? If there are family members here tonight, if we, please stand and be recognized. Former Commissioner Portier, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Commissioner. And to the public.
If you, I'm sorry, if you, just for the record, if you give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Sylvia Knolls Ferguson Portier Norman. Now, that's, that's amazing that I say it that way, but in 1935, October the 6th, my biological mother died in childbirth. Brandhilde Knolls, who was the midwife, took me home the same evening my mother died and said, nobody else could have me. She was going to be the only one that takes me. And at the time, I had, my mother had her father with her, and her sister, had a brother that came over each year from the Bahamas. My biological mother was nine months pregnant from me, and I had to be adopted. A lot of people don't know that. In fact, I didn't know it until I was about 13 or 14 years old, when they told me, because I knew nobody but mama. And I could not believe when they told me that my biological mother was not buried in Pioneer, not Pioneer, what's the name of the cemetery now? In Pineview. I'm getting much older. So I just want to thank you all, and I know the commissioner know, the sacrifices my mother made, and time would not permit me to say why I think she should be honored, because at that time, she took care of all the farm workers, Lyons, Cossey Lion Farm, Pompano, Joneses, everybody that had a baby in those areas, my mother was the midwife, had, but the one midwife. When she was 62 years old, she contracted, rumored to have arthritis, and could not hold the babies, and Mrs. Scott took over. So now, you know, this means so much to me tonight, and for the city of Deerfield Beach to recognize her. I heard the commissioner say a memorial, but I think all of the cemeteries would have a memorial added to it. But this special arrangement for the park, and how long I worked to preserve the park from being desecrated, I am very thankful to all of you. And Mayor, if I would say so, out of nine siblings, there's only two of us living, but a host of cousins, and as they say, that's my secret, other relatives and friends. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Portier, before you, Ms. Portier, before you sit down, Ms. Portier, before you sit down, if we could just have your address, I am sorry for the record. No, ma'am.
283 Southwest First Terrace, Deerfield Beach, Florida, 33441.
Thank you, ma'am. At this moment, we have a, I'm going to close the public portion to be heard. We have a motion, and we have a second. If we could have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle.
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes. Thank you very much. Next, we have a certificate, we have two certificates of appreciation. Actually, we do have three certificates of appreciation, and what we'll do is I'll announce the first one from up here, and as we go down into the pit below, I will announce the rest of them from there, so we don't have the commission playing musical chairs coming back and forth. But our first certificate of appreciation is presented to JM Family Enterprises and the McDougal Foundation for their contribution of the Kaboom Playground Build that we had back on March 11th. We had around 200 volunteers among the JM Family and the McDougal Family Foundation and the community that came out to help build a single park in one day. It was a competitive nationwide program, and they completed the program in less than six hours. And if those, for those of you who have been there, you can see what an incredible accomplishment it was, and we thank all of you who participated in that. The list is very long, so please bear with us as we honor those who participated in this. We would like to thank, in particular, right now, certificate of appreciation, the city of Deerfield Beach applauds you for your sincere dedication and contribution through a collaborative effort with the McDougal Family Foundation and the support of the Kaboom Project in constructing the Hillsborough Community Center Playground for Mr. Colin Brown of JM Family Enterprises. Mr. Craig Pollack from JM Family Enterprises. Mr. Rick Jordan from JM Family Enterprises. Mr. Mike Defacek from JM Family Enterprises. Certificate of Appreciation to Terry Scott from our cultural committee. Certificate of Appreciation to Ms. Judy Stanich of the Historical Society. Certificate of Appreciation to Kenny Brighton from the Kiwanis Club of Deerfield Beach. Certificate of Appreciation to Valerie Hackett from the Rotary Club. A certificate of appreciation to Avis Swinson from Rotary Club. A certificate of appreciation to Ms. Pam Militello from the Women's Club. Pam cannot be here tonight, but she sent her congratulations and thanks us very much for that. Certificate of Appreciation for Mr. Stalker McDougal from the McDougal Foundation. A certificate of appreciation for Octavia Spencer from the McDougal Foundation. And a certificate of appreciation to Demetrius Givens from the McDougal Foundation. At this time, if we'd have all of you come gather down here for our presentation? Again, we're going to do this a little bit differently, so if you don't mind, we're to come here and stand at attention and realize what it's like to talk from this podium, much like many of you do. Tonight, we are honoring someone who has put in 35 years of devoted service to the Broward Sheriff's Office, and many of those years were spent with the Deerfield Beach Code Enforcement Board. Ronnie Stark is a legend here in Deerfield Beach. Any of those, any of you who have attended, whether it be a homeowners association meeting, a code enforcement board meeting, or have had the pleasure of having to deal with code enforcement in the past, Ronnie Stark was always the voice of reason and very helpful for anybody that came forward. So tonight, we honor you and your retirement. So the city of Deerfield Beach applauds you, Ron Stark, for 35 years of devoted service in the Broward Sheriff's Office. Good luck to your future endeavors, and we know that your steady progress and result of this is because of many, many years of accomplishment. We thank you for your dedication, Ronnie Stark.
Thank you. Thank you, Bernie. It's good to see you.
We'd have a commission.
Todd, congratulations.
I'm just leaning all, I'm still here for you guys.
We'll let you speak in one moment there, my friend.
My phone number has never changed.
You ever got around?
Captain? You guys want to get home at a normal time for a change?
No problem.
It's, it's kind of funny, because I came to Deerfield Beach over 35 years ago. Sleepy little town, I could tell you. That's what it was back in those days. The captain could tell you, 10 o'clock at night on the beach, the sidewalks rolled up. Well, we all know that doesn't happen anymore, you know, okay? It just goes nonstop all night long, you know? And it's just ironic, I came in and filled out a job application with the Deerfield Beach Police Department, okay? And I'm going to use the expression, for shits and giggles, you know? Who'd have thought, yeah, who'd, who'd have thought they called me, you know? My apologies for that, but, you know, but they did, they called me. And you know what, I have to tell you, it was, it was a changing point in my life, okay? Who'd have thought I'd sit here and spend 35 years in one job as a police officer, you know, primarily, that was my function, I transferred over to code enforcement, you know, you know, say, I'm tired of being, doing the crazy stuff and getting beat up all the time, so, you know, yeah. Who'd know I get beat up more in code enforcement than I did in anything else? So, you know, but it was a changing point in my life. I raised my family here, I bought a home here, I still live here, Deerfield Beach is my home. I trained the captain, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but he could probably tell you better, you know, but I, it's a blessing that I've had this man, and that man in my life, you know, because he's looked out for me, because like I look out for him from, you know, from, from day one. So I am truly honored and grateful for this award, okay? Be honest with you. Some people come here and take awards all the time, but this does mean a lot to me, okay? Because this home, this community, this city is my life, and it's been my life, and I truly and gratefully appreciate the time that you guys who are here have been tonight, and, and I've been to many of these meetings, you standing in the corner over there with dentists, okay? Trying to harbor peace, you know? But thank you all very, very much, and I'm still here in Deerfield Beach, and I'll be buried in one of those memorial cemeteries most likely at some time, you know? So Sylvia, if you're still going, come by and see me, okay? Okay? Thank you all very, very much.
Ronnie, there's several people out back that'd like to talk to you about a ticket, if you don't mind, if you have a few minutes. Thank you, my friend. We have another outstanding public servant here in the city of Deerfield Beach, who put in many, many years, Ms. Frida Kaldus, the city of Deerfield Beach. The city of Deerfield Beach applause, applauds, applauds Frida Kaldus for her devoted service as the Senior Services Assistant Director. The phenomenal work that you have provided the city of Deerfield Beach and the residents alike is commended, and best wishes in your future endeavors, and we know that your work cannot be matched, and you will be missed. So thank you so much, Frida.
You're a hard act to follow, I will tell you. And although you did see in the agenda that I've only been with Northeast Focal Point eight years, it was a truly a wonderful, wonderful eight years, but I was doing the same thing for over 38 years here in Broward County before Northeast Focal Point, I was at Southeast Focal Point in Hollywood. So I knew all about the senior center here, and I knew Donna for many years, who was a wonderful mentor, and some of my friends from Northeast are here, and I will say that I was very privileged and very blessed to have the most unbelievable team to work with, and it's a team that makes you look good out there. So I thank them, and I thank the city for all your support of senior services throughout the many, many years that I've been affiliated and even throughout the many, many years that I've been affiliated even before then. I also want to thank my husband, who's here, he's a little camera shy, who put up with all the hours and the times that I came home and so on and so forth. So thank you, everybody. Thank you for all you do for the city. It's really greatly appreciated.
I'd like to thank everyone for bearing with us with that. I hope all of you agree that that is something that, as a city, we should do when we take the time to honor people, that we make it special, because it truly is special for us. So we'd like to make it special for you as well. Next, we'd like to move forward with the quasi judicial hearings. The city attorney?
Yes, anyone who's going to testify on item five or item six, would you please raise your right hand and take the oath? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is a truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth that help you got? I'll call each one, each of the applicants up, indicate that you have a right to a quasi judicial hearing, which is a formal hearing with cross-examination, and it's a much more formal process. Almost everyone waives that. If you waive it, you don't waive any right to present your full case. You will still have a right to present your full case and then respond and have the last word, but there'll just be no cross-examination and that type of thing. So I'll call the first applicant up, Crystal Lake Commerce Center, represented by Gator Engineering. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you indicate your name and representation, whether you wish to waive the quasi judicial procedures?
My name is Regina Bobo Jackson. I'm with Gator Engineering Associates, and I waive the right.
You do waive. Is there any presentation by staff?
Very brief presentation. This is application 16P-04 to plat an approximate 4.6 acre parcel to be known as Alonso Industrial Center Phase Two Plat. For the record, I probably should announce myself. Steve Graham, Assistant Director, Planning and Development Services. This application was published in a local newspaper on March 24th, 2017. 10 property holders were notified. We had zero letters returned, zero letters of approval, and zero letters of objection to date. On the screen, you will see the subject property and the surrounding 300-foot notification area. Happy to answer any questions, should there be any.
Anything by the applicant? Actually, we'd like to hear from the commission first, and then we'd like to take the public comments, if that's all right?
I speak in favor of this.
Seems like a potential improvement to the area, and it's consistent with the other things along Powerline Road. So I'm going to be voting yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yeah, from what I see from the map, that is four blocks from the lake, off of Powerline at least. Am I correct? If I am, then I heartily approve of this project.
I'm sorry, you do approve of this project?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Parnas. Anyone else from the commission care to speak? I'd like to open up the public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to comment on this. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. City clerk, if we could have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Next is Crystal Point Commercial Properties LLC, Caulfield and Wheeler representing them. Is the applicant here? Please state your name and whether you wish to waive quasi judicial.
Alan Hendricks, landscape architect with Caulfield and Wheeler. Yes, I'd like to waive.
You waive, okay.
Again, a very brief presentation. Item 17-P-205. This is a plat note amendment application, seeking to add an additional 2,000 square feet for industrial purposes to the already approved plat on this property. The application was published in local newspaper on April 7th, 2017. 14 property holders were notified. We have received zero letters returned, zero letters of approval, and zero letters of objection. Essentially, this plat note amendment is to allow the site to be developed in accordance with previously approved site plans on the property.
Commission comments?
I'm going to vote yes for this.
Any other commission comments? Not seeing anyone. Anyone from the public would like to be heard? Going to close the public comments section?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? City clerk, we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Thank you very much. Now we have the audience to be heard. The city attorney can please read the rules?
Any person wishing to speak on a non-agenda item may speak for three minutes. They must identify themselves with their name and address. They can have, the mayor has the right to grant an additional minute. No comments shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted. It's now open to the public on non-agenda items.
Just have your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Orlando Butrago, 522 Northeast 8th Avenue. I moved in last year into Deerfield and had synthetic grass added to my property. I had not been aware of the antiquated regulations regarding synthetic grass and not allowing it in the city. I've been trying to email you folks details and regulations referencing synthetic grass and how it works hand in hand with what we're trying to do in water conservation and all the runoffs that go into city that the EPA is spending millions of dollars on. So this is one issue that I'd like to bring up to the commission to look at. I have been cited, and I probably will have to remove mine within 15 days. I've been looking to see if maybe the commission would like to take my property as a reference point and do any studies or referencing that they might want to do before I pull it out to consider this, because I think it is vital for the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak? I'm going to close the public portion to be heard. If we could, I know, I'm sorry.
Representative Clark Reed?
Oh, I'm sorry. Former representative Clark Reed, who's here in the audience. I'm sorry, I did not see you coming forward. I'm going to reopen the audience to be heard portion. Anyone on the commission have a problem with that? Name and address for the record.
Gwendolyn Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest 6th Way, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Commissioners. It was brought to my attention of something that someone has written about the city of Deerfield Beach, and particularly about District 2. I don't know if you are aware of it, but it is very disturbing. And I am asking that the city commission refer this matter to the sheriff's department and that we have a record of what has been stated and what needs to take place. I've lived in Deerfield now for over 30 years, and I've lived in District 2 for over 30 years. And I have never heard anyone refer to bombing any part of this city because they didn't like what was going on. So I think that you really need to, if you have not seen the article, you really need to read it and to take some measures that will protect the residents of District 2. Thank you.
Thank you very. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Well, we're not going to answer from the crowd, but if you have any further comment, please feel free. You still have a few more minutes.
Thank you. This appeared in a blog this past week by a gentleman by the name of, I think it's Patrick Jovett, Joe Livett. And it's under something called Deerfield Solutions. And I would ask you to just take it under consideration, what is being said there? The mention of gentrification in District 2, and this is something that we are very much opposed to. I've spoken to other people who live in the district, and having served here on the city commission, you know, this is something that is not something that we foster in this city. So I would ask you to please look at this and to follow my directions, if you wish, about notifying the sheriff and letting him know that this statement has been made. And I think in these days and times, when we are going through all that we're going through in this country, we do not need this kind of comment being made about any city in this United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
A little too tense in here, so I thought I'd better get up.
Morning, Kenny. 615 Southeast 7th Avenue. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
I just want to mention tomorrow night is Relay for Life at the Butler House. Please come. The Kiwanis Club is sponsoring it, so I want to invite you and all of you to come to the Butler House, 6 o'clock. Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Not seeing anyone else from the public coming up to speak. I'm going to close the public to be heard, the audience to be heard. We can move on. Just a comment if we could, for the gentleman who spoke about the artificial turf. If you could come by, if you could talk to staff, we could have staff talk to him before he leaves tonight regarding that. I believe that we've already had discussions of that. Having been on the commission or had just taken my seat on the commission over eight years ago when that ordinance was first passed about banning artificial turf in the city of Deerfield Beach, what I can tell you is that not everyone agrees. While I do feel that the technology has changed, there are some very different opinions regarding it. I know that we are working on some of our ordinances in regard to something like that in the city. But we would like to keep you informed of that and speak to you directly on that, if we could. Also, in regards to what was mentioned tonight, as far as the statement that was said, we will, staff will look into it and make sure that that is not ignored, okay? Thank you. Now we'd like the public hearing for the second reading?
An ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, establishing a temporary moratorium on the submittal processing and issuance of any permit for location of wireless communication facilities and telecommunications towers and antennas for a period of 180 days from the date of adoption of this ordinance, providing for geographic area covered, providing for the duration of moratorium, and extension thereof, providing for legislative findings, providing for separability, providing an effective date. It will be a public hearing.
I'd like to hear from the commission first regarding this, before we open up to the public? Sure, please, if we can get an explanation?
Yeah, this is just, it's a moratorium. It is very temporary. It is to basically put a hold on any activity of installing any telecommunications facilities within public rights of way, so that, and this was actually recommended, it had its genesis in last year when the county attorneys for the state of Florida got together and set up a task force on this issue. The resulting study came out, the conclusions of the study came out in January, and one of the points made was that every city needed to review their regulations with regard to telecommunications facilities in the right of way. And in the indication that several cities were doing that but declaring a moratorium, so that while they were doing the study, someone wouldn't come in with applications while the study is right under your nose and saying, "Oh, gosh, I wish we would have had the moratorium." It's limited in scope, six months with 90-day extension at the most. We're going to move quickly on that subject. The review has already begun, and as I say, it's a limited purpose matter. And again, it will also converge with the possible legislation coming out of the state. There is legislation making its way or haltingly making its way through the legislature on the subject. So what we want to do is time our study with that legislation, and this timing is perfect. So as your legal counsel, I'm recommending that this be adopted to give us time to review our regulations and make sure that we are on the cutting edge and have the most effective regulatory setup as possible.
Anyone from the public care to talk on this item? Commissioner Drosky, I see you have your light on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anytime telecommunications comes before the commission, everyone should know it's an issue that's near and dear to my heart, given the experience in the villages of Hillsborough Park with the next cell phone tower from 2006 and 2007. I don't have anything to add substantively to what the city attorney stated. I will be in favor of this moratorium, so that we have an opportunity to, it's being reviewed in Tallahassee. But in the meantime, I would just like to add that the bill was actually up today before the Senate Rules Committee at 4 o'clock. So I know the League of Cities had suggested some amendments to this bill. Whether they were adopted or even considered, I'm not sure yet. So it's something that we need to closely monitor and another reason, I think, to support the moratorium.
Thank you, commission. Anyone else from the commission care to speak? Not seeing anyone else from the public. I'd like to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. We have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Now we're through to the consent agenda, items eight through 17? I'm sorry, eight through 12? Okay, my apologies. Eight through 12 for our consent agenda items. Do we have any polls from the consent agenda?
Yes, number 10, please.
Poll number 10? Anyone from the public care to speak on any of the consent agenda items? Not seeing anyone from the public, and we close the public portion to be heard. Commissioner Battle, would you like to speak on item number 10?
Yes, I would, ma'am. I have some questions. Is there anyone here from IBI? I have some questions.
Would you like a person to come down?
Yes, please.
City manager, we'd have them come down?
Yeah, I also have Ms. Vicky Plasse Picard with Community Development also come down to answer any questions Commissioner Battle or anyone else from the city commission may have about this matter.
Thank you. Your name and address?
Patricia Ramudo, 280 Northwest 8th Street, Boca Raton, IBI Group, 2200 Park Central Boulevard, North Pompano Beach.
Thank you.
I looked over your paperwork very carefully. Certainly, I wasn't pleased with everything that I saw. And I have a bunch of questions. First question is, what tools do you plan to explore and recommend to the Dane Group to help them develop the Dixie Highway Corridor?
Ma'am, I'm here representing IBI. I am the project manager.
IBI?
IBI Group. I am the project manager, but our urban planners, of which we have three assigned to this project and the team, are not with us. We weren't anticipating having any discussions with the commission. I know that we are represented by Kevin Greiner, who just completed a study for the city, a citywide study on the economic side. The urban planner, Vivian Brooks, who is currently working on a similar project for the city of Delray Beach CRA for the area known as West Atlantic, now being rebranded the SET. And Bonkum Kalra, who is our third urban planner. And as far as the specific tools, I don't want to misspeak as to what their expertise could address more specifically.
So if you can answer that question for me, you're not going to be able to answer too many of the other questions. One of my questions was, you said in your proposal that you were going to use an urban-centric approach to development, and I wanted to know why that, and, well, I wanted, first of all, for you to explain to the audience what's
of all, for you to explain to the audience, what's an urban-centric approach to development, and why you chose that over a people and/or a pedestrian-centric approach to development for that particular area. Mr. Mayor, having heard the first comment, or, you know, the first answer to my first question, I'm not so sure that I'm ready to go with this, and I guess I would ask the-
Yeah, well, one of the, no, and I'm ready, I'm going to answer your question, because I think you know what it is. One of the things you could do, and probably what I would recommend, because I think you express some concerns, and they're not, we don't seem to be able to close in on them tonight, because the applicant has indicated that they're not prepared to answer. One of the things you can do is continue this matter to a future meeting, possibly, if you'd like, have your questions, you know, put forth to them, so they can be prepared, or indicate that you have several questions, and they should have their team here ready to answer those questions.
That's exactly what I want to propose, that we, do we table, or do we?
No, it would be a continue, continue to a date certain. One would be the, one would you think, to the next meeting or the meeting after?
I believe the meeting after would be appropriate, if that's all right. With the City Commission, it's entirely their decision.
Yeah, so, because you've already have the agenda kind of set for the next meeting, so it'll be that.
Actually, I don't, we actually said it in the morning, after tonight's commission meeting. So we said it the morning after, yes.
And I would like to say, because it was a consent item, I basically took it upon myself to tell them they didn't need to be here.
A-S-S-U-M-E.
Excuse, A-S, and you are very correct, because we understood it was just going to be on the consent agenda.
So this would be a motion to table to the meeting of?
May 2nd at 7:00 PM.
I mean, continue to the meeting of May 2nd, and you're advised of the need to have your, your-
We will have them here.
I make a motion that we continue this item until the May 2nd meeting, and that, what was your, Mrs. Ramudo?
Ramudo, yes, ma'am.
Ramudo, that you have your team here ready to answer-
We'll be here for you.
...this particular item.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call on that?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Actually, I'm sorry, Commissioner Miller, or Vice Mayor Miller?
I was going to make a motion, we approve the rest of the consent agenda.
I think that's an outstanding idea. If you bear with me one moment, though, I just wanted the city attorney to clarify for the public exactly what that item was that was polled in that discussion that we just had.
The item dealt with the granting of an award of a-
The city issued a request for proposal. We call it an RFP, and there is a recommendation of award by a committee that is set up to interview the applicants, to review the responses, and make a recommendation. The recommendation was to award it to this IBAI Group of Florida. Now, that recommendation is a very significant act, and it's important. However, this commission bears the responsibility of making the final decision on that. And the commissioner had some questions that she wanted answered before she would vote on this matter, and is entitled to have answered. The applicant, understand, and I understand the explanation, because it was on the consent agenda, did not come with the full team. Many times, they'll come with the full team that made the proposal. And so, in order to have the commissioner's questions answered, the matter was continued to the May 2nd meeting. And at that point in time, the number-one applicant will be here with their team. All the commission could ask questions, and then you can make a determination. And that determination may be to award, it may be to go out for rebid, or maybe to get more information. But it's a thorough process, and this enables us, as this commission, to really fully vet the proposal and make the wisest decision possible. So this is, more information will be provided, and you can never go wrong when you have more information.
Thank you, city attorney. Vice Mayor Miller, I know you have your light on, and you have a motion on the floor to approve items, consent agenda items number eight, nine, 11, and 12. Do we have a second for that?
You know what, before we do that, I want to comment on this one.
The one that we've already voted on and closed?
All right, I'll just move on. Yeah, I make a motion to approve the rest.
We have a motion, and we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Moving on to general items, we have item number 13, Resolution 2017, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, appointing Karen Hardy to the Cultural Committee to fulfill an unexpired term. I'm sorry. Unexpired term, providing for service with no compensation, providing for an effective date. I'd like to hear from the commission first on this, before we move forward.
I make a recommendation that we approve.
We have a motion, and we have a second?
Second.
I appreciate the motion and second. This is my appointee to the Cultural Committee, Ms. Karen Hardy, so I appreciate the support on that. We have a roll call, please? I'm sorry, public to be heard on this?
That's what I was thinking, that's what I was waiting on. I didn't know if you were going to do the call first.
Well, I think what we'd like to do is here, people would like to hear from the commission first, just in case any of our comments might change some of the things they say at the mic. The way we've done things in the past is the public speaks first, and then the commission speaks, and it usually doesn't give the public the opportunity to counter or agree with or have any other further input on anything that we say up here. So it's, I think what we talked about the last meeting would be our preference to hear from the commission first, let the public speak, and if the commission has any follow-up comments, and then we would call for a vote.
And that will be on every item except quasi-judicial.
Okay.
Anyone from the public? Like the club, close to the public. Commission, any of the further comments? I mean, a motion? If we go ahead and do the roll call?
I make a motion, and I second motion.
It's done.
It's done.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Next, we have a resolution, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, appointing Jerry Lee as regular member of the Planning and Zoning Board for the city of Deerfield Beach. This is sponsored by Commissioner Parnas. Commissioner Parnas, you have your light on?
Yes, I do. Before we vote, I recommended Jerry Lee, because he's an activist in a large area of my district that's been neglected for a long time. And we need activists in all areas who care about the neighborhood they live in. Jerry Lee lives in Crystal Lake, and I highly recommended him for this position. I'm asking the commission to go along with my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the commission have any further comments? Anyone from the public like to be heard on this? Close it to the public then?
I'll second the motion.
We have a, did you have a motion first?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. We have a roll call, please, city clerk?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Next, we have item, we have a discussion regarding the community participation grant applications and selection process. City manager, do you want to speak on this first?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Gantz, Vice Mayor Miller, members of the City Commission. This was, this is regarding the community participation part of the fiscal budget. And last year, during the process, in the June workshops, and then again during the budget approval process in September, Commissioner Battle had asked that staff look at, for this upcoming fiscal year 18, that we develop some type of process for the City Commission to determine how grants or community participation funding is distributed to the various social organizations. Mr. Santucci went through and did a very, what we think is a simple, yet effective process for the City Commission to consider, and certainly, the recommendation is in the backup. And our goal is to make this an easy process, but also one where we can review any financials, and also what that particular organization may or may not do for the city of Deerfield Beach, for the residents or others.
Thank you. Anyone from the commission care to comment? No one from the commission? Anyone from the, oh, I am so sorry. Commissioner Battle, my apologies.
That's okay, Mayor Gantz, but just by way of appreciation to staff, sometimes we sit up here and we make suggestions, and we don't, after a long period of time, we don't know whether or not they are listening to us or not. But I want to thank staff for being diligent in their efforts in getting this together. I think it's a fine product, and again, just thank you for the work that you did on this.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Battle. Anyone else on the dais?
I think it makes sense. I'm glad you've gone this direction.
Thank you. Anyone from the public here to comment on this? Seeing no one from the public, like, close that. It looks like there needs to be action taken on this, is my understanding?
I think it's a discussion item, but I just wanted to add, as counsel for the city, I think it's, when you're dealing with grants and providing money to groups, I think what was done here is very significant, that it's a very positive, transparent process that will also help this commission make good decisions and have the public have confidence in the grant process. So I think it's very important what was done here, it's good work. I think you can make a motion-
Can we raise the bar and make a motion and approve?
Approving the process as set forth.
Your motion.
I make a motion that we approve the community participation grant application process as set forth before us this evening.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. City clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes. Commissioner Battle, thank you very much for doing that, too. Next, we have a discussion regarding Southwest 10th Street's PD&E study. This is put forward by Commissioner Drosky. Commissioner Drosky, care to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, here we go with 10th Street. I put this on the agenda tonight, because I wanted to discuss this with my fellow colleagues, because due to the sunshine, you know, we can't discuss it outside of this particular meeting. I first want to thank city staff, and the city manager was there, the assistant city manager, Mr. Santucci, was there, Mr. Good was there. If I missed anyone, you know, I apologize. All my colleagues on the dais were there as well. And I'm talking about the April 6 kickoff meeting for the PD&E study for Southwest 10th Street, for the segment between 10th Street, including I-95, up to Hillsborough Boulevard. And if I just step back a little bit, 10th Street is actually three projects built into one. You have the PD&E study kickoff, which they just had on April 6, which is that segment again, from I-95, from 10th Street to Hillsborough Boulevard. You have the segment, which is the, excuse me, the Sawgrass and Turnpike Interchange on Southwest 10th Street, which the kickoff study has already taken place. And then you have the corridor, the segment in between, which will be another PD&E study, and that will kick off sometime in June or July. So we go to this meeting, and it's scheduled from 5:30 to 7:30. From 5:30 to 6:00, they have three poster boards there, and they hand out this little color brochure, which I'm going to hold up, which basically, on the front, shows you the segment that I told you about, from I-95 to 10th Street, which I think we already know where that is. It tells you the project location for the picture above, and gives you a brief little description what a PD&E study is. And then you turn the flyer over, and it gives you a more, you know, descriptive explanation of the PD&E process. It gives you a little color timeline chart in the middle, and it tells you about public participation here at the bottom. And this is what they, this is what they hand you for one of the most important projects to affect our city. So needless to say, I'm extremely underwhelmed by what was given to us at that meeting. And the poster boards that we have in this first half-hour segment to evaluate was simply this picture here of the segment blown up on a poster board, and then it had the PD&E process, this timeline, on a poster board, and then they had a nice little blown-up version of Southwest 10th Street, you know, on a large scale, that was in front of us. And that's, that's it for the poster boards that they had. Then you get to the 6:00 hour, and they have a pre-planned presentation, this is FDOT, by the way, a pre-planned presentation with a voiceover, with a film or something that they show, again, explaining what was on this handy little brochure that they gave us, which again, offered no additional information. And then the project manager basically refused to take questions in a group setting, and there were many questions, and there was one individual from Century Village, pardon me, in particular, who had some very cogent questions to ask, none of them, which they wanted to answer in this public setting, pardon me. Instead, they wanted to send you to the side, where they had their staff, so you could ask them one-on-one what your questions were about this particular PD&E project. So to speed things up a little bit, this meeting was supposed to go from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. Well, I was there till almost 9:00 PM, and I was asking them the tough questions, and you get the runaround at first. And what you hear most is, well, we're having the kickoff meeting to get the public participation, to give the ideas to the planners as to what they want to build for Southwest 10th Street. That's the way it's supposed to work. We give them our ideas, our input, our feedback, they go back to wherever they go back and put this into, start building a design for Southwest 10th Street. Now, that's not the corridor, and it's not the Sawgrass, this is just the I-95 interchange. But again, there's three different studies, so the process is going to be the same for all three. You keep pushing them, and you keep asking the tough questions for the engineers, and like, for example, like I said, you can move the traffic as fast as you want east and west along the corridor, but when you get to this segment, where's it going to go? And remember, they're not supposed to have any ideas yet, because they're taking the public impact, input, rather. You keep asking the questions, and over time, and they want to go home, or maybe they want to speed things up, but you find out that they have ideas in mind. For example, the traffic that's coming east on Southwest 10th Street, when it gets to I-95, they have ideas for like the express lanes in the middle, which will feed into I-95, into the HOV lane that they're building, that'll come up to here. That was never told to us before. That was never explained to us. That wasn't on one of their nifty little billboards that they had in front of us. So you keep asking these questions, and then the project manager for the corridor piece, the kickoff is going to be in July and August, after asking her the tough questions and being there till 9:00, she readily admitted there are seven project designs they are contemplating. Now, seven is not a number you just pick out of a hat. It's not a random number. It's not a two, it's not a five, it's not a 10, it's a seven. So I was quoted by the Pelican as saying, "I left that meeting with a not-so-warm feeling, and I feel absolutely that way today, and even more so." Because if you read some of the backup material that we received from the MPO, the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization, at their April board meeting, they basically have noted that under the Trump administration, there is a major theme for the current administration to review FAST Act provisions. Basically, that is the PD&E process. There's a push by the Trump administration to either streamline or do away with the PD&E process. If the PD&E process goes away, the timeline for this project speeds up exponentially. Basically, what happens is, you have to basically pick an engineer to, who's going to do the project. So we're past that one-year part. Then you're going to take, basically, now they're in the PD&E process, that can take a couple of years. Picking the engineer to do the actual construction can take a year, and then you put a shovel in the ground. So maybe by the time you add up all those years, that's five years. If the current presidential administration has its way and does away with these PD&E studies, then they could probably be shovel-ready faster than you think for Southwest 10th Street. And that's why I wanted to put this on the agenda tonight, is for us to keep our eye on the ball. I ran very hard on the Southwest 10th Street issue, as the newly-elected commissioner, and I was involved with Southwest 10th Street for many years before I was elected, being on the COAT Committee, studying and reviewing this particular process. And the COAT Committee, with nine individuals from Deerfield Beach, made 18 specific recommendations to the MPO that needed to be considered as part of the, as part of the PD&E process. And we have to keep our eye on the ball and hold them to studying each and every single one of those 18 points. The project manager for the corridor piece told me, "Well, you're not going to get all 18 of your points." Maybe we knew that, maybe we didn't, but you have to study them. That they agreed to do. You have to study all 18 of them, and it seems like we're getting short-changed already You have to study all 18 of them, and it seems like we're getting short-changed already before this particular, before this happened. And what even concerns me more is that in addition to the Trump administration potentially doing away with PD&E studies, the MPO put on its agenda ideas, and this is from the MPO, ideas for project streamlining and faster delivery of projects. So I don't know if the MPO has bought in to the Trump administration's position of doing away with PD&E studies. If that's the case, they're not on our side either. So we have the presidential administration against Deerfield Beach. We have potentially the MPO for streamlining this process against Deerfield Beach. You have all of the cities around us who want as big as expressways they can around us, not in our favor. So we're the only ones fighting for Deerfield Beach. We're the only ones that are fighting for you. And I asked my colleagues to give me your input tonight, since this is the only opportunity that we have to discuss it in the sunshine. Let me know what thoughts that, that you have, and I wanted to basically let you know that this is, you know, this is, this is coming. I told, I told everyone before, this is the tsunami that's coming for Deerfield Beach in one way or another. And it seems like it's only gaining momentum. So we cannot lose sight of what's coming our way.
Anyone else on the commission care to comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Parnas?
Uh, maybe table.
No, ma'am. The public portion to speak is not open just yet. We'll open it momentarily. We'll give you a moment. Commissioner Parnas?
This is the time when Deerfield has to unite as a city. Where you have to look for when the next MPO meeting is. You have to look in the papers. You have to call us, leave messages for Commissioner Drosky. When is it? Where is it? And then show up in droves. If you give up now, you're going to have a superhighway that's going to ruin Deerfield Beach. If we unite, we have a shot. They're afraid of big crowds. Their typical, typical deal is have a meeting where maybe 200 would show up, cancel it, postpone it. The next one, maybe 100 would show up, cancel it. Maybe the fourth one with 25 people would show up, that they can handle. Very few people showed up at this meeting on April 6. I was there. I was hoping the place was standing room only, so that they know we're united and we're going to fight. Because this is for the survival of the way we live. If they have their way, waterways, people will not be able to get out of their homes. Independence Bay, the same thing. Century Village, same thing. So it's a quality of life we're fighting for. Not so much whether or not we get a highway, but how it impacts all of our lives. So if you want to keep Deerfield a viable community, then you got to help us pick up the ball and run with it. We can't do it alone. We have a lot of towns against us. The MPO loves to build. If they get the money, they'll build a highway to nowhere because they have the money to do it. And they have no public transportation as an alternative. I've always said this. You want people to give up their cars? Have viable public transportation, like every city in the country. New York, Chicago, subway system, something, so people don't drive downtown. Without that, we're going to have to have cars. But what we don't need is everybody from Coral Springs, Margate, Coconut Creek, Parkland, all coming through Deerfield in a superhighway, not using our businesses and clogging our roads. So it's up to you. We can only do so much. We need your help. Todd needs your help. I was disappointed when COAT had meetings, and other than the committee, maybe 20 people showed up. We need 100 people to show up, 200 people to show up. I can remember one MPO meeting where 100 of us showed up and made signs out of paper plates. They listened that night. Every one of us that spoke, they listened. So what are we going to do? Give up or fight? It's your town. You live here. It's up to you to help us. We'll fight. We'll stand in front with the spears. We have to know you're behind us.
Thank you, Commissioner Parnas. Commissioner Battle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, first of all, reiterate what Commissioner Parnas has said. When those meetings are going on, the entire city should be showing up. Because like he said, they, they listen to people in crowds. But to Commissioner Drosky's point, I think when they sent out that information, it was a little bit misleading, because when we got there, they wanted to talk only about the high-speed lane. And they did that, I'm thinking, because at the MPO, when they started talking about these vehicles that are going to drive by themselves, and they're going to put them first out in Century Village, and I started questioning, well, how are they going to get on the road? Just, just all kinds of questions. And you have my senior citizens who are going to be trying to get on 95, and you have this high-speed lane. Are you all not thinking? Where, where are your thinking caps, one way or the other? And so they didn't deter from putting in the high-speed lanes, but at least they came back and said that they would put something on and try to hear from the community. As Commissioner Drosky said, there weren't too many of us that showed up. Remember what happened. Just remember what happened on the Hillsborough piece. We're going to go from, what is it, four lanes? Six lanes down to four lanes, I believe. And at that particular meeting, when they came to town, 15 citizens showed up, and they went back to their desk drawers or their desks, and they made a decision. So it's very, it's urgent that when you hear that they're talking about, or they're going to have a PD&E study, or that FDOT, because it's being driven by FDOT, that FDOT is coming to town, and you need to come out. You need to make it, your, you need to put it on your calendar so that you can show up. I sit on the MPO, and I have to say, Mr. Drosky and Commissioner Parnas, Commissioner Drosky and Commissioner Parnas, I very rarely, if any time, see anybody from the city of Deerfield Beach. I go down there, and I start fighting from the beginning, because most of the material is not even where most of our citizens can even read it. We have a large Portuguese population. We have a large Haitian population. We have a number of French Canadians that live here. And everything, if I'm not fighting there for them to put it in an alternate language, they just want to push it out in English. And that's not fair to our resident. So I go in there with a fighting spirit. There are some things that we've been able to do. For instance, I keep it on the top of the list that when you're going through with, if you're going to do anything to, what is that road out there? Turnpike. You've got to be willing to give us an exit coming east. That will relieve a lot of that traffic, and you may not have to do all of that stuff that you're trying to do with the 10th Street going west. But like Commissioner Parnas said, if we're not there, if you're not there voicing your opinion, guess what? Coconut Creek is, Coral Springs is, and they are being listened to. So it's imperative, then, that you come out and help us in the fight with this transportation thing. Unless what we end up with, we may not be pleased with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Battle. Before I open it up to the public, I just want to comment on it myself. Commissioner Drosky, you might not have had a warm feeling, but I certainly did when I left, because my blood was boiling when I walked out of there.
Mine, too.
This is not our first rodeo with them. And, and many of us have all fought on this together. I have a little bit different point of view on that. Because knowing that meeting fatigue is a strategy, and I, it's an unspoken strategy, in my opinion, to lull the public into submission on many of these projects that come down the pipeline, I prefer to not waste the public's time, but make sure we keep them informed and engaged. I keep saying that, because if you know what is happening, and we keep you, we keep the information flowing to you very clearly, obviously, the public's going to make up their mind when they want to show up on that. But if we keep you informed, and we do keep you engaged, and we tell you that this meeting is very important for you to show up, rather, at a kickoff meeting, it's a little different. But I will say, the, the problem with the kickoff meeting is when they don't want to allow the public to speak. Because they know that the masses and that type of mob mentality doesn't work in their favor, because once people start, they can privately pull a person aside and give them a wonderful song and dance, and they go away rather quietly. There is definitely strength in numbers. So when you start talking about facts, and you start talking about some of the issues and how it affects our city, it's good for everyone to hear that. And I think it's our job up here to keep the public informed, keep them engaged and interested. If we continue to ask people to come out in droves for meetings that really might be informative, but not really an action item type of meeting, I fear that we're going to end up falling into the trap of meeting fatigue. I would much rather tell the public, "This is what happened at this meeting. At this next meeting, at this date, a decision will be made. We want to hear from you, and we need you there physically." Letters and emails do help during those gaps of time before we have those meetings in which a decision is being made. But I can tell you, having served on the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization and seeing some of the colleagues from across the county, when people show up en masse and put the pressure on them, they listen. If you were to show up at every single meeting, though, yelling and screaming, they will tune you out. If you come in ranting and raving without having your facts straight, they will tune you out. It's important to know what you're talking about, and that's our job to keep the public informed, and to have a strategy when people come up to speak. Because I think that type of precision, if we, if we use the public input to really help get our message across, it can be very, very effective. But blindly walking up, ranting and raving at every single meeting, quite frankly, their ears, they turn off. So there is a way to do this, and I think it's our job to get that information out. I would not look, unfortunately, I don't count an FDOT or the MPO to put things out in Portuguese, in Creole, in Spanish, or in French. And that is something that can be very effective, and that might fall on us to at least get that information out there, whether it be through social media, whether it be through mailings, whether it be, whatever methods that we can use to get the information out to the public, it's very important. Because let's tell, let's talk about what's at stake. From District 4 to the shore, this is going to affect you. So if you live in District 1 or on the beach, and you think that 10th Street is not going to have an impact on you, consider this. Mess with the economic engines that those industrial areas provide to the city of Deerfield Beach, the tax base that they provide. Prevent their ability to conduct business the way they do, because there is a reason why they chose those areas to move to. It's not because they have a beautiful view of the dump. It's because they have easy access to highways. Now, if they put something in place which causes the traffic to work negatively against them, they will find other locations, and that's going to affect your bottom line and your tax, your taxes here in the city of Deerfield Beach. So this is not something that you can ignore if you're living over the beach, because you just think you want to get from point A to point B quickly. It has a serious impact on us. U.M. Sylvester Cancer Research Center, it's located in Newport Center, and all the fine businesses we have in Newport Center that is thriving and is on the verge of really taking off over there, which has already been well-established with outstanding businesses, is in dire jeopardy if whatever plans they decide to do to connect 10th Street and 95 affect their ability to get in and out. Publics Distribution Center, the Sun Sentinel, which has now moved their headquarters out of Fort Lauderdale to Deerfield Beach. If, if we have a problem with them being able to access the roads with a disastrous design, we're going to have a serious problem in the city of Deerfield Beach. J.M. Family has expansion plans for their campus that whatever they decide to do in connecting on I-95 and Hillsborough is going to have a serious effect on us. This affects everyone in the city of Deerfield Beach. And while you might hear compassionate comments from Coconut Creek, Coral Springs, Parkland, all the way down to Weston and Sunrise, and Weston Down, my good friend Dan Stermer, they all have their, their opinions, and while they might sound like they're sympathetic, they really, really don't, in the end, aren't looking out for our best interest. They're looking at it from a regional standpoint, and we would be the sacrificial lambs. We cannot let that happen. So we need to stand up and show up, but show up at the right times. So it's our job to keep people informed, and I hope that's what we do. Before we hit any more comments from up here, if we, is anyone from the public like to comment on this?
Yes, sir.
Rita Massey, 19th Avenue. The real problem is, you're speaking to a precious few. In my opinion, what we have to do is, each commissioner has to have a meeting in their district to inform their people of what's going on, inform them what the problems are, when the meetings are, if it's necessary to, to get our school buses, get the people to the meetings with the school buses. We have to fight, but we have to do it properly. You're talking to a precious few here. We are the ones that come all the time, and we'll do whatever you tell us to do. And the other people probably would do it as well if they knew about it. They don't know about it. Have a meeting, say what the meeting is, get them informed, and get them to the meetings. I mean, I think that's a simple fix. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massey.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Drosky?
I'm so sorry, Ms. Portier, if you could wait till you get to the mic, while we can hear your lovely voice, we want to make sure the mic picks it up. And just your name and address again, for the record. I'm sorry.
My name is Sylvia Portier, 283 Southwest First Terrace, Deerfield Beach, Florida, 33441. And that's, that's what I have to give up, right? But when I asked to speak, Commissioner Battle, Mayor you, and Commissioner Parnas, it looked like you said everything I thought should be said, and you did. But for Commissioner Drosky, this is a project I've worked on for the last 20 years. And every now and then, I might slip into an MPO meeting, or I might talk to some of my friends at DOT, because we had 40 years of fighting with them about Dixie Highway. So I know quite a few of the people. But the, the main thing, if you're going to become interested in that corridor, you got to make DOT change their mind about coming through Deerfield Beach. There is the plan on the books for them to go up to the Hillsborough Canal, come along the canal, and get on I-95, not on 10th Street, like the mayor said, with the economics of our city. But it is a written statement with people telling you, at DOT, some of the members of the MPO, especially Coconut Creek, what said, you know, Deerfield didn't want to come, but to the Turnpike, let them suffer now. If you would do like the mayor said, and have it on our water bills, when their meetings are important, just put it on the water bill. The people in Deerfield used to come out. And I know with them being more educated and more politically trained now, if they follow that water bill, you'll have what you need out of Deerfield Beach. We are all familiar that when it comes to Deerfield, nobody cares. What they're waiting on, and I've heard it said, is all the people in Century Village, the oldest set of the Jewish people, die out because they're going to be the only one fight. But that's not so. We all will fight. We will fight from 1, 2, 3, and 4 district, if fighting is worthwhile. They go about bragging that they are French Canadians, they'll never be able to vote. That's the kind of information you got to put out without putting it on a blog, or some stupid person talking about Facebook and all this stuff. We got to get away from that. You put it on that water bill to that person who have to pay that water bill, and they'll have a representative there.
Thank you, Ms. Portier. Anyone else from the public here to speak on this subject?
Hi, Orlando, we travel again, 522 Northeast 8th Avenue. The other thing, going back to what you were saying, is if each district sets up a Citizens Committee, maybe- what you were saying, is if each district sets up a citizens committee maybe to inform them with signatures that can be presented at these meetings, won't that carry weight as well as having people on board? Just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Brandon Stark, 4765 Southwest 14th Street. I live in Waterways. I was raised there. I grew up there. I have had nothing but problems with 10th Street and all the traffic since I was a kid. Even when I got my first car and drove there, it was nothing but a disaster. The fact that they're conducting their business in such a shade tree manner, hiding things, not answering questions, it's people that can't be trusted. And I think that on top of the water bills, that personally, letters should be sent out to HOAs. Waterways Independence Bay, if you send a letter out to the HOA, they'll jump on it faster than, excuse me, a fat kid on a cupcake. I hope that's not too much. Yes, I'm sorry. It's the best analogy I could think of, sir. But you have to understand that the HOAs, he knows. They're the last people you ever want to deal with, and they're the last people you ever want to irk or upset. To know that the plans are to just completely bombard 10th Street with their new plans and the traffic and all the other citizens from other cities, oh, excuse me, cities, just to clog up our roads, it's ridiculous, and it shouldn't be done. We're a city, we grew up here. We need to stand together, whether it be signatures, letters, HOAs, it doesn't make a difference. Every meeting, everyone needs to show up. Everybody can sit here.
Mr. Stark, if you could address the commission only, please.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Anybody can say that they'll be here, they'll show up, they can cancel it as much as they want. If you show up every time, your voice will be heard. You can't be shut out. They can close their ears all they want. But if you're there every day, every time, every meeting, they can't shut you out. There's an old saying, out of sight, out of mind. I don't plan to stay out of sight.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Tanner, your name and address. Amy K. Tanner, 111 Southeast 5th Avenue, Otis Tanner Way, Deerfield Beach, Florida, 33441. I know we've been talking about this a really long time, and that's a good thing. I think one thing that was really successful, when you provided buses, you had one here, and local people came, and you had one at Century Village, and then our bus went through and got, we had two busloads. And that helps build up the numbers. And you're right, numbers count. When those people that aren't used to, well, I mean, they face people all the time, but all of a sudden, when the room is full, you're right, oh, we can't make it tonight, you know, put it next week, or put it tomorrow, or whatever, to try to inconvenience us. So if you can provide transportation, it might help people come. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public on this item?
My name is Dave Morantz. I live at, I just moved, 7800 Northwest 87th Avenue, Tamarack. It's been my pleasure to be a part of the COAT, witness this commission and the previous commissions on the leadership decisions that they've made over a period of time. And I don't think this is a followers' issue. This is not about people showing up. This is a leadership issue. And because the commission is in a position where they have to operate in the sunshine, it behooves the people that were elected here to put things on an agenda that can be spoken in a formative matter. And I think, Mayor, excuse me, I think the idea that people have been elected to make suggestions, to let people know when it's time to show up, is prudent. You know, you have to have a strategy. You have to have faith in the people who you're electing to run that strategy. It's not the electorate's fault that they don't show up. It's they need to be led. And I think it's a great opportunity. I think the general atmosphere and culture of the commission meetings the last couple of months have been a super. I think it's a huge opportunity for the leadership here to, if you can only talk about it here, this is the time, this is the place to talk about it. It's not a followers' issue. We've known you guys have been here for a long time. 10% of the people are going to vote. You know, it's not getting people on the bus. It's why are we going? What are we going to do? What's our plan? And how we're going to execute that plan. And I think all of you up there should be encouraged about the support you have. I think you should feel proud about the work you've done and the quorum you brought here. And I think a lot of people have a lot of faith in your ability to pull it off. You just have to work together. I do have just a comment. I don't think presidential politics is necessarily what we want to talk about here in terms of the things that we're going to do here in Deerfield Beach. And that's just my own opinion. But thanks a lot for the good work you guys are doing.
Thank you, Ms. Rantz.
Gwendolyn Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest 6th Way, Deerfield Beach. Having served as your representative in Tallahassee, I am going to recommend that as much pressure as possible be put on your elected folks who represent you in Tallahassee. FDOT is there. They have the ability to call them into their offices, to make it known what the feelings of the city of Deerfield Beach are. For years now, we have had this whole idea of 10th Street, you know, just tossed back and forth. We were able to put it off when we had folks that really got to them and told them no, that this wasn't what we wanted. And I would suggest to you that your lobbyists, as well as your elected officials in the state, be made to know exactly the feelings of this new city commission and the new mayor, and to understand that you are not going to stop fighting for what you want as far as 10th Street is concerned. It's when you get quiet, that's when things happen, seem to have happened. We had to fight them when we wanted the light there in front of Food Bazaar. You don't know how long that went on until people started dying before they would put that light there. So I'm telling you that we really need to hone in on to our electeds on both sides of the aisle, and to get, you know, kicking on this and get what we want in the city of Deerfield to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Richard Rosenzweig, Deerfield Beach, Century Village. I'm well aware of the problem that this represents, and I'm concerned about several points of this. First of all, this is not coming directly from the MPO. It's coming directly from the governor's office. This is something that he's mandated, and this is where the budget has come from. And somehow, we have to go to our lobbyists in Tallahassee, as Gwen just said, and our elected officials, and make as much noise up there as possible. This is where it's coming from. What we've been given, as far as I'm concerned, has been a dog and pony show to make us feel comfortable and feel good about what they're doing and giving us. And we saw the result of it with this PD&E study we just got, which was nothing, was a joke, truthfully, because they're just trying to appease us. They've already got a plan. They know what they want to do. We've seen the plan already. At the MPO office, it's on the wall. It's a, and I'm sure that our commissioner's seen it. It's a depressed roadway. They haven't shown us how they're going to tie it to 95. They haven't showed us what they're going to do with 10th Street. The Sawgrass Expressway is what they're after. 10th Street is a sideline with this. Our surface roadway leading in our roadways, they haven't shown us how they're going to work the 95 with Tri-Rail and with the businesses in the Newtown area, where the public and everybody else is. How that roadway is going to be a flyover in that area, because they can't go through the Tri-Rail. They can't lower it down in that area. It's got to go over top of it. Are they going to take that over top of the military trail? Or are they going to take it underneath military trail? Are they going to depress it? Where are they going to depress it? They haven't given us any of this information, not telling you anything about this. This is what we have to fight for. We have to get the best deal we can get. I have a strong feeling, you know, they say going to stop it. This isn't not going to stop. This is in the works and has been working for a long time at the MPO and with the state. We have to get the best deal we can get, and we have to fight with everything that we have to get a roadway that we can live with. It should never have been just four depressed roadways and Century running alongside it, because they just don't tell you that. If you look around and look at what they're projecting for us for the population growth in the next 20, 30 years, this roadway will be empty by the time they build it, because the traffic's not going to be able to hold it. And like our commissioner from District Three said, there's no public transportation. And this is why, from the very, very beginning, I fought to try to get a tunnel through that area, 12 lanes to get rail through there, get other buses through there, some way to move traffic from the north to the south, because this is going to be a major throughway east-west when they do this. And it's going to come. And the question is, what better deal can we get? How can we get MPO and FDOT to listen to us? And how can we build this to make sure that it doesn't destroy our city? Because that's what's going to happen, as you've heard. And we're one city out of 31, and the other 31, 30 cities don't care about us. And the MPO doesn't care about us. And the governor doesn't care about us. How we fight this, I have no idea. But I think, as I said, I think it's our lobbyists, it's our legislative, our elected officials, and us raising the devil as much as we can with them to let FDOT know, because they've already got a plan. And that plan doesn't include us.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenzweig. Anyone else from the public on this item? I'm going to close the public hearing. Anyone else from the commission have any further comments? What I'd like to suggest, maybe to address this, and I will say that the COAT committee and the strategy that we took with that was very successful for that stretch of 10th Street. I think we were very effective in getting what we never thought we would get. Perhaps an ad hoc committee put together for the city of Deerfield Beach to, one of the things that was successful about the COAT committee is that we had a group of dedicated citizens that attended every single one of the meetings and debated and shared their opinions, and they were part of the process. They were officially recognized and put together by the MPO. And let me tell you, that process was really ugly. And to give you an idea of how it doesn't necessarily work in our favor, we had an incident in which they decided to have their very first meeting. How much notice did they give us, Commissioner Drosky? Two weeks?
If that.
I think they announced it, and they gave us two weeks. And we had just formed the committee. And they told us two weeks, and we wanted to make, and they set a set schedule, and this is what the schedule will be. You cannot change it, and every single member must attend every single meeting. So when they only gave us two weeks, and they said we cannot move the first meeting, I said, you have to. And they said, well, we can't. I said, okay, you have an option. You can have your meeting on that date, or I invite you to my press conference tomorrow morning when I announce to everyone what the process has been and the hell we've been put through with the MPO, having their, the people that they hired to actually work to put this committee in the hell they put us through for six months. The date changed, which was good. I guess they didn't want to attend the press conference. So we didn't have the press conference. But there are ways that we can, that we can have our voice be heard. It doesn't waste people's time, but also utilizes our ability to rally people together. If we have an ad hoc, I suggest an ad hoc committee get put together that will look at the three subject matters that are going to be at hand for us. I-95 intersections, exchanges, that was the kickoff that they just had. We know that the COAT committee exists and might be reconvened for the stretch between military and the Sawgrass for 10th Street, but also the interchange of the Turnpike and 10th Street, because amazingly, all of that just suddenly all came together as if it was Kiss met. You talk about seven plans. I did not know about that. That's pretty disturbing for their ideas that they had for I-95. I can tell you this, while I was very happy and optimistic about what we were able to accomplish with that stretch on 10th Street, what concerned me is when they came out with, and actually said this to the press, what the budget was for that project. And they said, well, it's about a half billion dollars, which is what we had heard all along. But when they came out, they said it was $540 million. $540 million is very specific. It's not just a half billion dollars. It's 540 million. So that made me suddenly say, it sounds to me like you have a pretty good idea exactly what this project is, despite the fact that the PD&E study had just started, or actually, that time, had not commenced. They supposedly did not have exactly an idea of what they were going to do, but they had a pretty specific number. I would have been fine if they just said about a half billion dollars, because then I would have, it was ballparking it. But 540 is pretty specific. That doesn't make me feel real confident that we're going to get a fair shake. So we have to, we have to be aware. We have to be alert. If we put a committee together to attend these meetings and report back to us and have elected officials there, I know our schedules are busy, but to try to at least have one elected official rotate in and out to make sure we have someone always there, as well as these members, so we can report back. And then we can get that information disseminated out to the public. And I think that's how we keep the public informed. The one thing I'm very confident about is we have a very united commission. And I feel that we have the ability to be able to rally our residents and get people involved, and not just our residents, but our businesses. Our businesses can be extremely valuable in this process. When you have the places like U.M. Sylvester or J.M. Family and their connections and their ability to make sure that their best interest is looked out for, as well as the city of Deerfield Beach, I think that works in our favor. So we have the ability to do it. It's just something to consider. I'm not, you know, I'm not telling us that that's what we absolutely must do, but I think it would be something for us to consider doing that moving forward, because we're looking at three separate projects that all have an impact on us. And there's a way to utilize, we have a lot of smart people out there. People, you know, I'm never the smartest guy in the room, I always say, but I knew who is, and I like to listen to them. So there is a lot of smart people out there that I know that would be willing to put their time forward to get involved with this and help us keep that information flowing to the residents and get it out the best way we can. Commissioner Parnas?
Do we need a motion, or do we need to put it on the agenda at the next meeting to form the committee?
Mr. Attorney?
Well, if you're going to, if it's going to be an ad hoc committee, you can put it on the next meeting if you want to just do the appointment. If you let you have the appointment tonight, I don't know that you're prepared to do that tonight.
No, no.
So what I would do is, you can, Burgess can contact you guys and see when you want to have it adjourned for a future meeting and do that.
No time like the next meeting. Why wait? It's too important an issue to kick down the road.
Okay. Commissioner Drosky?
The seven design plans that I was talking about, that I spoke to with the project manager, was the project manager for the corridor, not I-95. So they're already ahead of us with design concepts for the corridor itself. That's who it came from, not from the PD&E folks. They were there, obviously, but it wasn't, the seven plans was not for I-95. So I just wanted to add that, that it's, they're thinking, they're forward-thinking much further than we are at this point. As far as the ad hoc committee, I think it's a great idea. Keeping, it keeps the citizens informed, it keeps the commission informed. I will be at most meetings anyway, whether it's my turn in the rotation or not. This project goes right through the heart of my district, and I'm going to be there fighting every step of the way. And getting the information out to the residents is essential. That's one of the reasons why I put this on the agenda tonight. So not only could I discuss it amongst my colleagues, but to keep you that are here and those that are watching on, you know, on the video, you know, informed of this particular project. I did, one of the speakers did mention about keeping the HOAs informed. Well, I have done that. I've kept them involved. I've been in touch with the presidents from Waterways, Independence Bay, Waterford Courtyards, and Waterford Homes. Waterford Homes doesn't have an organized HOA, but they have a designated group of leaders over there. All of those folks were at the PD&E kickoff study, by the way, that particular night. They need to help disseminate that information to their residents, get it on their websites, email blast, get that out to their residents so we know what's going on. The mayor is right. We're not going to scream Chicken Little for every meeting, because then you won't show up when we need you. We will let you know the most important meetings, but now we're keeping you informed every step of the way.
As both the city attorney and the city manager whispering in my ear, it's not sweet nothings. What they're telling me is that, when it comes to committees, we just need to kind of formulate, I think what needs to be decided first, I think, it sounds like all of us, and I apologize, Vice Mayor, I have not heard, I'm assuming with the nods of the heads from everyone on the board here, that we're all in agreement that a committee might be worthwhile. How that committee's made up and how we, what is the most effective way to utilize that? Might be something that staff needs to get back with us on. And before we put that, but Commissioner Parnas, I appreciate that. And Commissioner Drosky, bringing that forward and getting some action on that will be, I think will serve us well. But how we put that together... But how we put that together, I think maybe we'd be better off hearing from the city manager and the city attorney either tonight at a later date or to guide us in how we do it. Nothing's going to happen between now and the next commission meeting, I don't believe. I don't think we're going to see bulldozers out there starting construction. We have a little bit of time. It's better for us to do this right rather than rush into it. But clearly, we're looking ahead, and I think that's a good thing for us.
Burgess and I will discuss that.
City Manager?
Yes, yes. We certainly know this is a priority for the city commission, so we won't be twiddling our thumbs on this, but we would like to make sure that we do it correctly the first time so it couldn't be challenged down the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other further comments on this before we move on? Okay, not seeing anyone, we're going to move on. We have a discussion regarding HB 13 relating to the Sunset, the community redevelopment agency. Mr. Drosky, Commissioner Drosky, you want to comment on that?
I did, but it's so boring compared to our last particular subject. The CRAs were under attack that we discussed, you know, at our last commission meeting. There's been developments since, so I don't know that there's really a lot to discuss tonight. I think the CRA bill is pretty much... It's not dead, but it's dying. In Tallahassee, there was a hearing yesterday, and the bill did not come out of subcommittee, though through some procedural posturing. There's the opportunity for it to be reheared again. It's possible, probably unlikely, so it's just something we need to monitor, but it looks like it's a moot issue at this point.
That's excellent news. Anyone in the public want to comment on that as far as the CRA bill? Not seeing anyone, we're going to move forward. If we could ask the people that are leaving if they could please quietly exit, thank you very much. Comments by the city manager and the city attorney?
Members of the city attorney?
Yeah, I have quite a few, about half a dozen, actually. But they are follow-ups from the last city commission meeting. But before I get into that, I would like to just take a quick minute to have our assistant city manager, Ms. Cara Petty, introduce our new director of Parks and Recreation. We're very excited to have him onboard. He's going to be a phenomenal part of Deerfield Beach, and he has a lot to offer, and we'll have him step up to the podium as well and say a few words after Cara is done. Thank you, Cara.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, commissioners, good evening. I'm happy to introduce the new director of Parks and Recreation. Previously, he was the interim director and deputy director for Parks and Recreation in Detroit, Michigan. He's worked for the Michigan Department of Natural Resources at Alexandria, Virginia, and right here in Fort Lauderdale. He has a master's in organizational management, bachelor's in liberal arts from Wayne State University. He's been honored with the Minority Society Achievement Award from National Recreation and Parks Association, and the Agency Excellence Award by the Youth Sports National Alliance. So please help me in welcoming David Miller to our new tribe.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. It's a pleasure to be here in Deerfield Beach. I am truly excited about this opportunity to come and to do what I can to make the Parks and Recreation Department the best it could possibly be. As I said to the staff the other day, my intent for it to be a model agency. When people think about how things should be done in Parks and Recreation, they want to think about Deerfield Beach and how they do it. And that's going to be my goal, that's going to be my challenge to the staff. We want to be the best that's out there, and that's what I'm committed to doing. And I'm three days in, been working on budgets for a couple of days, getting figures together. It's been fun first couple of days, but I'm really excited about being here, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Excellent. Welcome aboard, Mr. Miller.
Thank you so very much.
And not to embarrass Mr. Miller, but...
Please do. It's our rookie hazing.
Yes, yes. But, you know, he was brought back to the city of Detroit, Michigan to actually help them as they exited bankruptcy, and they had several, I forget how many, community centers shut down throughout the city, and he had the difficult job of going into the different neighborhoods where they were closed and working with those residents and figuring out how to reopen those, but on a much more limited budget. And he's worked in very dire situations with the city of Detroit, but he's also worked here in South Florida, as Ms. Petty noted, with Fort Lauderdale. So he's very familiar with hurricane exercises. He's also very familiar, which is a very difficult aspect to recruit in Parks and Recreation, and that is with cemeteries. So we're very happy that he has experience in that as well. So on behalf of the team here at Deerfield Beach, the tribe, we certainly welcome you. So thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you very much. Honored to be here. Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Just quickly, I would like to have Mr. Good come up to talk about his findings. I believe it was at the last city commission meeting, Commissioner Battle had brought up about speeding and about the heavy traffic situation along Natora Boulevard between Hillsborough and southwest 10th Street. He did do a traffic study, which also measured speeding, which is actually, as you had theorized, is very bad. So, Mr. Good, thank you.
Okay. Well, a respectful good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Thomas Good, Environmental Services Director. So as the city manager has stated, he had directed me to go out and have a study done. We did a traffic count. Let's see if we can get started here. Did I go the wrong way? Here we go. Okay. Thank you. So we did a traffic count, and what we did was basically on the southbound lanes going from Hillsborough Boulevard to southwest 10th Street. This is on Natora. We did it around the 500 block of Natora, which is about right in the center between Hillsborough and 10th Street. And the purpose was to see, you know, what is the actual impacts of the Hillsborough construction on Natora. So what we did was, we did a... We conducted a traffic study where we put a device out there that counted traffic and measured speeds for seven days. And this was through the period of Monday, April 4th, through Sunday, April 10th. So we captured a full week worth of data. And what you're going to see here, pretty much, is that the first column, of course, is the day of the week. The second column shows you what is the daily volume. It's a 24-hour period volume. Then we broke it down into two peak periods, one in the morning and one in the evening. The morning peak period, as you can see, not a lot of people are trying to get from Hillsborough to 10th Street, just seems like local traffic. But as you can see, when we hit the PM peak hours, which is in the evening, a lot of people are using Hillsborough... I mean, Natora for the shortcut to get around the Hillsborough Boulevard traffic. What's interesting to note here, too, is that if you look at a Saturday and Sunday, it's sort of like what is, you know, sort of a normalized... A normalizer for what is that traffic volume? And you can see that the traffic volume is nearly three times what normally it may or could be. And so then we measured some of the speed. And I guess what I'm trying to point out here, what probably jumps right out at you is that there's only about 6% of people that travel at the speed limit or under the speed limit. Everybody else is traveling over the speed limit. Now, most people do travel over the speed limit, right? Anybody who travels at speed limit or under, you know you're in South Florida. It's troubling. But we figure maybe about a seven-mile, you know, buffer could help. So we did a measure about what is, you know, what is the volume of speeding above 37 miles per hour, and we get about 63% of that traffic is above 37 miles per hour. So what's the point? Well, you know, this is the first traffic study that we actually conducted on this roadway through Fair since that Hillsborough Boulevard construction began. And we know, obviously, that it is redirecting traffic, and we do know that, you know, that there's issues now. And so we're going to be using this information, and we're going to be working with the FDOT folks to try to find more ways to relieve the congestion on Hillsborough, which we've been working with them. And one of the key things we've been able to do is we've added 15 seconds at least on the light that's at Natora, on Hillsborough, between Natora and Fairway, right? Fairway Drive. So that seems to help a little bit, but we have another meeting tomorrow to try to see if we can still change a little bit more of the pattern. But it does seem that it has helped a little bit, but we're going to continue to work with that. So we'll continue to monitor this. We'll use this information to support all the efforts that we're interested in in order to make certain that we have safe travel ways. And I can tell you that we've talked with the police department, sheriff's department, and Captain Schnackburg has made it clear that they are working on a traffic operations now and that they, you know, they're aware of this new pattern and speed here, so. And that's about the end of what I got to say, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Good. Is there any questions for Mr. Good?
Vice Mayor Miller?
Would there be merit to installing one of those things that... It's a big sign that shows how fast you're traveling? That slows me down. You know, when I realize I'm going 40 in a 30 or something like that. You know what I'm talking about. It could help slow it down.
No, that's a good idea. We'll look into that.
I think that usually tends to be like a high-score type thing for people, so that's... Sometimes it's a deterrent, sometimes it's a challenge, so. Commissioner Battle?
Yes. I first want to thank Mr. Good and also thank our chief. I've noticed, because I travel that road every morning, since the police has been there, they seem to... Well, once they go around the corner and see the truck parked there, they tend to slow down, which is good. I also want to ask the city manager if he could somehow get the information to the folks that live over in Natora. As you know, this is a 55 and over neighborhood, and they're the ones that are having a problem. When you try to, if you're 55 or older, your reflexes might not be as sharp as they used to be. So for them to try to get out on Natora and go where they want to go with the traffic speeding like it is, it makes it very dangerous. So it is, you know, an avenue that we... Boulevard, rather, that we need to keep an eye on as far as the traffic. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Good. City Manager?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Tom. Just a couple more things quickly. This past Monday, Mr. Gressik, along with city staff, did relocate the sea oats from the current location down to the area that the city commission did direct us to do at the last commission meeting. Mr. Gressik and his staff did a good job of talking to the Florida DEP and getting what I was surprised was a very quick decision from them in the affirmative. So I just want to thank staff there and also update the public on that. The other thing that it's not good news, but it's not bad news yet either, but I do want to thank the mayor and city commissioners for your calls and efforts with the Florida legislature regarding the Alzheimer's funding for the northeast focal point. Still don't know if it's going to be funded, but we're hopeful that it will be. And the last thing I'd like to discuss is dealing with this weekend's infamous Boca Bash, which is a big boat party that they have up in Lake Boca. And unfortunately, we are impacted by that at Pioneer Park. Last year, for those of you who were not on the city commission, we had pandemonium over at the park with boaters who were trying to use the boat ramp and tying up traffic, just not on Second Street and these side roads, but actually onto Hillsborough Boulevard as well. We also were having issues of not necessarily physical fights, but a lot of verbal altercations that would have probably eventually evolved into physical altercations at the ramp with people saying, "You're going too slow. I was ahead of you," things of that nature. On top of it, we also have this weekend here in the city of Deerfield Beach, on Friday and Saturday, the Surfers for Autism event, which is a very special and important event here for the city of Deerfield Beach because Surfers for Autism started right here on the beaches of Deerfield. And of course, on Saturday is the great pig-out-in-the-park that's hosted by the Deerfield Beach Chamber of Commerce. So our staff, from both a Parks and Recreation standpoint, as well as law enforcement, are going to be stretched greatly on Friday and Saturday, which means on Sunday, we run into the problem. Last week, Captain Schnackenberg received a call from his counterpart with the city of Boca Raton indicating that they were going to be shutting down their boat ramps on Sunday because of the thousands upon thousands of people that go there, and it ties up boat ramps. It creates all types of problems, not only there, but also in the water, and they have to pull in state resources, county resources, and then, of course, our own city resources. So they had asked him to approach me to consider closing down the Pioneer Park boat ramp, which I said, "We would be certainly interested in doing it. I'd bring it to the city commission." However, today, he contacted Chief Schnackenberg because I wanted something in writing from them, and they have since then decided that they're not going to close their boat ramp. Instead, they're going to put 10 deputies at the ramp to control any issues there. They're also going to limit who can go into that area, so it's... If you're not in a car with a boat trailer with a boat on it, you're not going to be able to go in there, which leads us to this situation. We do not have the funding nor the staffing capabilities to put 10 deputies at Pioneer Park. I'm also concerned because now the people who are the patrons that would normally go there to get on a boat at Boca, I have a feeling that they're going to come down here, as I'm sure everybody can figure out, to Sullivan Park. Well, what do we have at Sullivan Park? New public docking facilities plus parking, not only in Sullivan Park, but also in the Cove, or even over at the parking garage and the beach in general. So what the captain and I discussed is the potential recommendation to the city commission that we shut down the Pioneer Park boat ramp on Saturday, or actually, early Sunday morning, around 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, and then do not reopen it until later in the day. Now, we certainly realize that this is an inconvenience to our residents who may use that boat ramp for non-Boca Bash-type of activities, whether it's fishing or just going for a boat ride in the intracoastal or out in the ocean. However, they're going to be inconvenienced anyway because the boat ramp will be packed, as will be parking, because they were parking on our fields, they were parking in the cemetery, they were parking on people's front yards, whales, and everywhere else where they could find a place that did not have a no parking sign. So I'll leave it up to the city commission to discuss that, what you would like to do, but we feel fairly confident in this recommendation, or else I would not be bringing it before
Commissioner Battle?
Yes. You mentioned about Pioneer Park, and you also said something about Sullivan, but I didn't hear a solution for Sullivan. Certainly, I don't want them over there messing up Sullivan Park, and we just got that, you know, to going.
Yeah, I apologize. I was trying to go through this really quickly, and I did leave out one point. Earlier this year, thanks to Captain Schnackenberg, and so he deserves credit on this, he was able to get us a marine patrol vessel, and just for us, which the city never had before, free and clear. And that marine patrol vessel will actually be at the Sullivan Park area, checking that out, as will the zone deputy. But at the Pioneer Park, we will have a deputy there on overtime, right at the intersection of northeast Second Street and Sixth Street, to not allow boats to go in there. And of course, the other entrance to Pioneer Park that's right over here does not have a route to get to the boat ramp. a route to get to the boat ramp. But they'll be covering that from that distance if somebody does try to go across the field.
Vice Mayor Miller? I'm sorry, Commissioner Bell, give some more?
Yeah, just a follow-up. Did we at any time discuss or have some input from our marine advisory board chair on this, or?
No, we did not bring that to them. This was more brought to us by the city of Boca, but that's something that we will discuss, and I'll talk to Mr. Gressik, because he's liaison to that board for the city commission. We'll certainly get input for next year on how to address this.
Okay, sounds good.
Vice Mayor Miller?
I do appreciate trying to avoid the problem. Could there be a possibility that Deerfield Boat Ramp on this weekend could only be used by Deerfield Beach residents? Can we make a rule like that? That would knock down probably two-thirds of the traffic.
I mean, I think that would be very difficult from a logistics standpoint, because what would happen is you'd have-
We'd have to check licenses.
Yeah, and then you'd have a line up of traffic trying to sneak in there anyway. And as Andy said, I don't necessarily know that we could do that because of the Florida inland navigation districts, um, yeah.
One at a time, please.
I was just thinking, you know, it's one of the advantages of living here and having a ramp, so convenient to the inlets and such, but wow. I don't have a better idea. I wish I had one thought to think of this time, to think of it rather.
You know, one of the issues with this is that, while it's an inconvenience certainly for those that want to use it for something beyond Boca Bash, or even just to use it as residence, the bigger inconvenience is going to be on the people that live in that area that have to deal with what would happen. If we have to, we're pretty spread thin with what we have as far as staffing, considering the events that we have going on in the city. I would much rather have those resources put into protecting Sullivan Park and making sure that doesn't become the sneak-in for that area, because Boca Raton is going to be cracking down very strongly on this, and that means they'll be looking for alternative routes. This is something that will go down as far south as Pompano, if not beyond, to get people to this event, or this gathering, so to speak. So while it is unfortunate and it's frustrating, when we were first informed of it, it was they're closing down their boat launches, which left us with no choice, because if we became the only area boat ramp, that was certainly going to be a problem. Now that they're going to open theirs up and have it heavily manned and heavily regulated, certainly that's still going to have a heavy impact on us, so I don't see any way to avoid it, unfortunately. And it is a good idea to bring that to the marine advisory board, to have a longer conversation with that as far as, because this event most likely is not going to go away. It might, it might be limited, but it certainly is not going to go away, so we need to come up with a long-term strategy for it. Commissioner Parnas?
In the meanwhile, if we're gonna close down the boat ramps, we need signage far enough away from the park, so people thinking of coming to the park to launch their boats know it's closed. Otherwise, you're gonna still have the traffic jam. If they don't know that our ramps are closed, they're gonna drive there.
I agree, I'm sorry.
So we need signage to let them know, blocks and blocks away from there, that the boat ramps will be closed for this particular day.
And not only that, we need-
One moment, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. You say that, did you have something you want to add on that, City Manager, before?
Yeah, if I could just address that. Captain Schnackenberg does have a, we have what they call those message boards that we put up along the roadways, that will be, they'll be put in different locations long before you get to Sixth Street, where most boats go to. So there'll be one east and one west of that area.
Sixth Avenue.
Or, I'm sorry, Sixth Avenue, thank you. So we'll do that, as well as putting it out on Facebook, the Twitter, the emails, the District Four email distribution, things like that. We'll get it out to the papers as well. Plus, I believe that Parks and Recreation will put out posters Friday and Saturday at where you pay when you park with a boat trailer at Pioneer Park, just notifying them if the city commission does decide to move forward. And not to stop Commissioner Miller, but Chief, Captain Schnackenberg, did I miss anything?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
The signs are important, but I feel like I know where this is going, but if we are gonna close it, we need the signs going up tomorrow. Not the day of. We need it, that means tomorrow, with lighted boards, we're closed this weekend. And let them go south as much as they want, but I know people that go to that. I visited via my golf cart, it's like a phenomenon. It's Woodstock on the water. Without the bands, but I mean, uh-
You may have just created another event, Vice Mayor.
Uh, no, that dates me also. But if we're gonna close it, we need signs up tomorrow. I'm serious. I'd like, we need them tomorrow. It'll be a disaster. You get mad people with their boats in back, making U-turns, it'd be a mess. But if they have a few days' advance notice, they will know not to come here and go south, go to Fort Lauderdale and drive your boat up if you want to.
City Manager?
Yes, if I could just address that, I believe that if you were to approve this tonight, we're ready to move first thing in the morning.
Tomorrow.
And I also believe that Captain Schnackenberg is talking to his counterparts directly to the south with the city of Pompano Beach, because they also had problems last year with their boat ramp as well.
Delray will be too?
Yep. We're not worried about Delray. We'll encourage them to go to the town of Hillsborough Beach to-
Thanks for that, that was great. That's always helpful. I will say this, we do need to get this out as soon as possible to make sure there's no confusion. There's still going to be people that are gonna miss that. I'm not sure if one deputy's gonna be enough to hold back the tide, but we need to make sure that there is information put out there as soon as possible, by all means that we have, to make sure. And we ask the media to assist us, and that is best they can. Vice Mayor?
I think if we close it, we have to put barriers, you know, just so it's very obvious. Don't go in the park, no parking, the whole thing. I mean, so obvious, as so soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Do you need a motion?
Commissioner Parnas?
You need a motion?
I think you've got a clear directive from the commission you don't need.
Okay.
And if I could just address-
Sure.
-the barriers, as soon as the Surfers for Autism event is over, the barriers from that will be moved directly over to-
And that's Saturday, and this will be Sunday, and it's-
Sunday morning.
From there to there.
Yeah, yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, hold on, let me just check my notes.
Any more great news that you have for us?
Yeah, actually, this is good news. I was able to, I was invited to attend the University of Miami Sylvester Clinic's Leadership Council. They asked me to serve on that for the next year. And I talked to their medical director, and we are going to try to have him come here and speak either at a meeting in May or June. It's very impressive what that, what their clinical studies have succeeded in doing with just not cancer treatment, but actually with survivability and extending it for just not years, but in some cases decades. So I really think it would be a great opportunity, not only for the city commission, but also for the public to hear about that. And as I always say, you know, our CFO is probably one of the smartest people I know, but Dr. MJ, as he likes to be called, he give Hugh a run for the money on that, so. Thank you. And that's all I have, Marigan.
Thank you, City Manager. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Miller, or Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes, I want to just remind people again, it was mentioned earlier, about the event at the Butler House on Thursday. Relay for Life to support that, a $10 donation, good worthy cause for cancer prevention and research. We have next week, Wednesday, Cuisine of the Region, which is an incredible event. I had a paper on it. That's Wednesday, helping to support Northeast Focal Point. There's a few tickets left. It does cost $60 a ticket, but it's a kind of event that you will remember and look forward to the next year. It's a great event. All the restaurants, giveaway free samples of their, you know, what they make up, and it's a really, an auction, it's a really good time and a good event. And I also want to remind you all that next commission meeting, I didn't get it this one, I am gonna be bringing up the Styrofoam ban. I hate Styrofoam. Please research it, look it up, it's called styrene, and I think you'll get on board with me, because we have tried to recycle it in the city and we're not able to do it. So I just want to remind you, that's gonna be coming up on the commission, and if you do, just look up Styrofoam and read enough about it that it doesn't break down. It's a pollution thing, and I think we set a good precedent. Other cities have done it. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Bell?
Just a couple of things, and I guess this is right off the bat to Burgess. Somebody somewhere along the line, put it in my ear, that we may be cleaning out some of our warehouses or whatever. And just a note, if, tell them to look for, because I understand they have, may have stored some cemetery artifacts somewhere, so if you could, you know, somehow keep an eye out for that type of, those type of artifacts or whatever, that would help us a great deal as we move forward to complete the Bran Hilda Richardson knows park. One of the other things that the commission ought to know is that at the MPO, they have found funding for the road diet for Martin Luther King Boulevard. It is a, as far as I'm concerned, it's a safety issue basically, because when they hit Martin Luther King from Tenth and/or Hillsborough, it's just a race. It's a road race, to see how fast they can get from Hillsborough to Tenth Street, or vice versa. And in the middle of all of that, we have schoolchildren. And so, you know, we're going to be, they're gonna be going forward with that. If you take a look at their long-range transportation plan, it is no longer there, but I have been assured that the reason it's no longer there is because they have found funding to do the project. Now they just need to do the project. Another thing about the MPO information coming out of there, then, the Tenth Street that they're talking about, you might be interested in knowing that it's not going to get off the ground until they're theorizing 2021. They don't plan on doing, or they're not funding or planning on starting on any roadways until they have complete funding, one way or the other. So now is the time for us to jump and make through the, all the hurdles or whatever, because it's not even totally funded as of yet. So we have that to look forward to in terms of, if you have any input on it, one way or the other, you can get that to the commission, and then we can relay your concerns, and vice versa. The commission, if we want to get additional information out to the public, we have a good time to do it. At that meeting, or at the last meeting, I did have a chance to talk to the people from FDOT, and they assured me that the eastern off-ramp is being considered to come off of the Turnpike. They have also decided that they are going to put in some other, only two other off-ramps on the Turnpike, and I believe one is going to be at, they did tell me, Oakland Park, and I think the other one is someplace up in Palm Beach County, one way or the other. So at least it's going to get two other exits, so it should relieve some of that activity that's coming off the Turnpike onto Tenth Street, once we get our particular exit. I did, I have a chance to talk to the people in Oakland Park. As you know, they have a fence along Dixie Highway, and we were told at one time that we could not install a fence, especially where Dixie Highway, where the children cross the railroad track. We're going to be getting, ladies and gentlemen, the Bright Line train, and it's going to be running at rapid speed, top-notch speed, and I am concerned about the children that cross that railroad track. And so, like Oakland Park, I wanted a fence there. But the, FDOT has always, not FDOT, FEC has always said that we could not do that. Mr. City Manager, get with the people in Oakland Park, because they were able to do it, and Mayor Ardenato assured me that he has the formula, so we need to make those connections, so we can get those fences installed. Thank you.
Commissioner Parnas?
I have never seen so many happy kids, as I did at West Side Makita Park for the egg hunt. We distributed along with the Kiwanis and city people, I don't know how many eggs, plastic, forty-five hundred eggs, and they disappeared in under ten minutes. Three-year-olds and four-year-olds running with little sacks and baskets. Inside the plastic eggs was candy, and the kids were wonderful about bringing the empty eggs back to us, so we could use them for next year. It's an event, next year, come out. It's a joyous thing to watch kids of every race, every ethnicity, playing together, running up across a field, picking up eggs, having the lifetime of their life. And they even had a snow cone with, I don't know how many of you remember eating snow cones as a kid, but they had them, and I enjoyed one. It was a really fine event, and next year, please, come out and support the kids, because this is what the city's really all about, making kids happy on a baseball field, running around, picking up eggs, saying, "Look, I got one, mommy, I got one," and really happy. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Drowsky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have a couple of things. First, on a somewhat lighthearted note, the villages of Hillsborough Park Deer that ran off to greener pastures has been replaced this morning, so fear not, he's back. Secondly, it's board appointment season. I am in need of an alternate for the marine advisory board, preferably if you're a District Four resident. If not, or you know somebody, please email me and let me know. I have a coastal geologist as the main appointment, but I do need a backup for the marine advisory board. And in addition, for planning and zoning, I have a land planner that I don't actually have room for on planning and zoning for my appointments, so if any of my colleagues are in need of a, either a regular appointment or a backup appointment for planning and zoning, I have a land planner with a great resume. I just unfortunately don't have room with my two appointments to put her on planning and zoning, so I'll let you, you know, get with me or the clerk's office, because I have that resume. Next, bless you. Next, I have on May 6th, just as a reminder, my next Saturday office hour is from 10:00 to noon here at City Hall. I believe there's only one or two slots left open. I'll remind you at the May 2nd next commission meeting about that, but if you have anything, please sign up, because it may be gone by then. And last but not least, if you go to the city's website, I believe it's under residence, sign me up, there is a District Four newsletter and crime alert that you can sign up for, and in the District Four newsletter, I do give updates about Southwest Tenth Street. So if you don't hear it here at the commission meetings, you can find out through my weekly newsletter what's going on with Southwest Tenth Street. I give information out to you that you're able to find out in that weekly newsletter that comes to your inbox. Other than that, that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Drowsky. Just along those lines, and it's something we, you know, obviously, this is the only chance for us to talk about it. I am looking to do a citywide crime alert. We are teaming up with BSO to put out Twitter alerts for people, so they're aware of things that are happening in real time, for the most part. So should there be a missing person, a silver alert, a crime going on in the area, whether we have a gas leak at someplace, or any type of road closure, BSO will be sending out through the, and with Deerfield Beach, the Deerfield Beach alerts, that they will be sending that information out via Twitter, so people find out in real time. But in expanding what we, what I've started in District Four, and you've been championing here since you've been in office, the District Four crime alerts, I'm looking to do that citywide. So it might seem redundant to do a District Four crime alert while we're doing a citywide crime alert, they might be rolled all into one. I know staff is working on that, I don't know whether they've told you this or not, but we need to kind of figure out how we're gonna handle that, so we don't have some redundancy, but at least we have information going out to everywhere, because it's been very effective, and it's been an outstanding tool for District Four, and it's something that people- And it's something that people in District One, Two, and Three that I've talked to would like to have that information as well. Much like the way the District Four crime alert came about where you had HOAs or neighborhoods next to each other not communicating, when you have a crime that's just outside of the District Four area, like we've had recent break-ins, uh, crimes of vehicular, you know, convenience where people have gone in, in, uh, tried doors or broken in. That's happened in the apartment areas that are, uh, just to the east of military, that they've had an issue there. So that's not something that's going out in those alerts. And I think that's something from a citywide standpoint we're going to be looking to do. So, uh, just so you know, we're not trying to take it away from, I'm not trying to take it away from you, just trying to expand it citywide. So I, I would rather not have some redundancy. Not to outdo what happened at Ovita McKeithen Park. And I, on my way there, I thought again and I said, you know, they don't need one more person at Constitution Park with limited parking and limited space, but they went through 10,000 eggs at the Flashlight, uh, Egg Hunt that they have at Constitution Park. And it's amazing because if you talk to a parent and, uh, 10,000 eggs were probably picked up within 15 or 20 minutes. If you were to ask a child to pick up a toy, it would probably take you a week for them to actually pick that toy up, but they can find 10,000 eggs in 15 minutes. The, uh, the Flashlight Egg Hunt is the only one of its kind in the area and it's the only one that also involves adults and teenagers as well. It's an awful small park to have that many eggs in it, but it's a, it's an outstanding event. And kudos to staff for keeping it organized and having a great event there. So thank you very much for doing that. As was mentioned, we have the Surfers for Autism event. This is their 10th annual Surfers for Autism event. Don Ryan does a phenomenal job with them and true miracles happen in our beach when this event takes place. I encourage everyone to come out and witness a, a really heartwarming event and, and kudos to them. We, uh, we do have the Pig Out in the Park that will be at Quiet Waters Park this year and that's going from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. by the Chamber of Commerce. And I thank you, I thank them for that event. The other thing about that with the Chamber of Commerce, one of the things that I'm doing as the mayor is I'm sending a letter to any new chamber member so they have at least a, a contact at City Hall. I like that, that information distributed and I believe we do that. But, but as new businesses come into the city, we want to make sure that each district commissioner is aware of the new businesses that come into your area. But that's just something that I'm doing for, for new chamber members, that they're getting a letter from me, welcoming them to the city. And if you'd like to include your business card in that also, so they know who to contact for their area, we're happy to kind of expand that. So we do it as a, as a group. I think it'd be a good effort. Okay? With that, I have no other, uh, Vice Mayor Miller?
I forgot to say something and maybe people know this, but, um, a contract has been signed for the hotel and Cove Shopping Center as well as the restaurant. So that's going to happen. A lot of, such, so I'm done. People would think that it was not going to happen, but it is going to happen. So, uh, it's interesting to reapprove the renovation under the bridge, tie it with Sullivan Park. And almost that same week, I found out the contract was sculpted. So it's all going to fall in place very nicely.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for saying that. I know that the contract had been signed. I wasn't sure if that was out there, but thank you for doing that because that's one of the things you'll find with the wealth of misinformation that's put out there. That's been one of the ones that has bad, been batted around. And I think it's important for people also to know that for the first time in 25, 30 years, the city of Deerfield Beach is collecting revenue. We've already collected, I believe it's two checks, uh, for the maintenance of the Cove Parking Lot, which is something that we haven't had in 25, 30 years?
Ever.
Fifty, sixty.
Well, I know we did have it for a three-year period.
Oh, that's right.
We had it for a blip in the 90s, but now we have it on a consistent basis and we've already collected two checks on that. So when you hear people say that we're, uh, not, people aren't paying their fair share or that we're getting a bad end of a deal, um, we are collecting money for the first time. So it, it, it's a good thing. And that, that misinformation, uh, hopefully will end. So, uh, I have no other comments. Uh, I'd like to have a motion, have a meeting adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We have a second. Uh, everybody say aye.
Aye.
Say a nay's. Meeting adjourned.
Yeah, it's, it's probably over anyway now.